Welcome everyone to the council meeting on this Monday, November 21st, 2016. We'd ask that you turn off your cell phones or put them on vibrate this evening and I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'd like to start off with a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mayor and council members' comments. Are there any comments from the council at this time? Oh, I'm sorry. I've already made a mistake. Roll call, please. Thank you, Jill.
Councilmember Barnes, Reed, Brown, Decker, Kraus, French, and Mayor Domingo.
Now, council members' comments.
I'd like to thank the council and the mayor and the city manager for a form of arrangement and a resolution that we've been getting from each other.
Thank you. Hearing none, we have a number of presentations this evening. I'd like to start with Art Connect Project with Albion Recreation Department, Mr. Noble Schuler.
Good evening. My name's Noble Schuler. I'm here with my wife Pam. We operate a business called Schuler Arts and I'm also here with Larry Williams, who's the director of the recreation, city recreation program. And we're here to just make you aware, inform you, and show some slides of a project we call Art Connect. And so if you'll address your attention to the wall over here, it's really a Calhoun County arts initiative and it's funded by the Battle Creek Community Foundation. And it does a number of different things. It's connecting art and recreation. The recreation program has, for a while, wanted to expand its offerings to include the arts and we're able to do that currently. It's connecting art and people with 48 free art classes to kids, adults, and families. It's connecting art to communities with 10 learning programs that are being offered, showing how important the arts are to community and to people. And so we do that through slide presentations and discussions throughout Calhoun County. It's connecting seven Calhoun County artists, some of whom we didn't know each other when we began, and so it's a great way of developing creative and professional exchanges. And then, really interestingly enough, we have three artists, local people, who are very much being connected in a more profound way by sharing free studio spaces in Schuler Arts Studios. And then finally, it's connecting art centers together with Schuler Arts and the Battle Creek Art Center. So you might not be aware, and so that's why we have these images of the great programs that the recreation program offers. And so at the bottom of this list, you can see that it's now including some art classes with, through the Art Connect Project, and we hope maybe that will expand. They have some wonderful things for kids and for adults, and these are just some images of that. Daddy Daughter Dance, Bridging the Gap Program, some swimming programs. And then they have the Peapod Summer Dreams. It's a summer program and they do many, many wonderful things with young people. Take them on various field trips and have really multiple learning experiences. We have the Kingsley Sports Camp, and now we also have some art classes. So Schuler Arts, you might not be aware, but it's a studio where Pam and I share our faith, our creativity, and our love for the arts with others. It's located on five acres of land that's just, it's adjacent, it's directly east of the old high school or the new Opportunity School. And so we have innovated workshops and presentations there. There are indoor and outdoor studio spaces. Here's our ceramic studios, kiln areas, glass fusing studio, small gallery area. This used to be an old veterinary, so we've been changing these spaces into creative art spaces. We do custom framing and we offer a variety of art experiences throughout the year to lots of different groups. A lot of college people have come over. We have adults, ministry teams, business teams, and many, many other groups. So the Art Connect is connecting seven artists and they've been really, they're really creative people. Maureen Reed does watercolor. She's taught classes in watercolor. She's obviously interested in nature. She does some stenciling and some spraying with watercolor and does some very unique pieces. She also does some three-dimensional objects that have watercolor with them as well. Sabine Ledoux is a sculptor and Sabine takes old cast-off materials, things that you might think of would be not used in art, and she puts them together in such a way, you can see over here on the right-hand side, that's at our Albion Library. And she works with groups of people using materials that normally we throw away. She's very interested in the environment and using art to create wonderful works of art. Jerome Washington is a local person. Everyone loves Jerome. He's a very talented young man. He can draw like crazy and fast and he makes these portraits, which are wonderful. He goes into schools and spaces where people will allow him to draw their likeness. You can have commissioned work of art. And he also does illustration for books. And more recently, he's continuing his study and series on people who have been in the armed forces. So you'll see more of that. Bobby Van Eck does glass fusing. She takes, this is our studio here, she takes small pieces of glass, cuts them, puts them in a structure, and then in a kiln which is heated. She makes beautiful, beautiful jewelry. Craig Bishop does oil painting. He's from Battle Creek. He's very talented, well-represented. He has many, many shows, taught at college level, high school level, and he's now currently teaching at the Battle Creek Art Center. Pete Williams does collage and mixed media. Pete's a professor at Calhoun Community College and he does a lot of different things. These are some of his collage pieces where he's joining materials together. Upon moving to Battle Creek, he began to do these kinds, and they're large, they're quite large, almost as large as what you see here. This image of the cereal, Battle Creek cereal, he's kind of putting that together and creating various art pieces. He likes to cut and glue and organize paper, and so he's done that. And then this is in a place that used to be a church, and this is an installation, and this represents people who might have worshipped in that space at one point in time. This is a piece that is kind of a hopeful piece. It shows that through education, great things can happen and things can prosper and grow. I do a lot of different kinds of things. As an artist, you take and draw and you paint and you sculpt, do lots of different things. But a great many, much of my time has been and energy has been developing programs and spaces where other people can create and have, and express themselves and have art experiences, such as Albion Senior High School. Star Commonwealth developed art, music, and drama in areas that weren't those spaces before. Pam and I bought a building downtown years ago. This is the picture, the big pictures there is the day we bought it. It was Thompson's Flowers and we transformed that space into a really cool art space, ended up selling it to a doctor. It's currently the Food Hub. I went back to Star Commonwealth and focused on art and ministry. We used art, visual arts, music, drama, and museum activities along with, to hit spiritual kind of concepts and ideas with many, many youth. And of course, now we're working with Schuler Arts. So we had 48 free art classes. They were offered June, September, October, and November. We had three core classes that were taught in each of those months, plus one of the other artists. So there were four classes taught at 10, 2, and 6, so there are 12 classes each day for kids and teens and adults and families. Yeah, saw someone there, we know. And here is the oil painting class. Notice there's young and old, they were mixed together. There's the intergenerational activities that were going on and work was wonderful. Jerome and his drawing classes, Bobby and her glass fusing classes, and these are jewelry pieces, they're pendants that people could wear. Here's some ceramics that went on. Someone you might know in a sculptural class using materials that usually are cast away, cast off, a creative card making class, and the watercolor class. The Art Connect Project will end and culminate in January with an exhibit of these seven artists at the Battle Creek Art Center. And so we're just really pleased and grateful that Larry has been able to work with us and allowed us to work with him, and we hope that will continue on. So it's a great combination of city activity and others. Now, I've done all the talking, so Larry, if you want to say something, or Pam, if that, if you have something else, this is your time.
No, you covered it real well. I'd just like to say that it was a pleasure doing the Art Connect Program. It did allow us to expand our programming. A lot of people think of recreation as just picking up balls and bats and those types of things, but I think it's important that we expand to meet the needs of the entire community and art was one of those connections that worked well for us.
I think it was amazing that we had people from Olivette, Eden Rapids, Palmer, Jackson, all over, and they came to Albion and they said, "Oh, I've never been here before." And so it was great. And we had about 60 people almost every Saturday at the classroom. And it was very fun to see people, in fact, with the last series, we had two women that were sitting next to each other. They didn't know each other, one was brand new to town, and all of a sudden they ended up going to lunch together and coming back and taking another class. We thought some connects were, so it was great.
Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Our second presentation is the Albion Malibu Brewery LLC, Ben Wade, Charles Moreau, and John Rogers.
Hello. I am Ben Wade and while these guys are setting up, I want to do a little unrelated commentary. My wife and I have over 18 years actually met in high school art class taught by Noble Schuler at Albion High School. Everything in a small town is kind of connected, so. So there's a couple of perspective drawings and architectural prints that are being set up here for you guys to take a look at, but to kind of introduce ourselves and to summarize, the three of us are...
We have them, right?
You have...
So if you show the public, I think that would be...
You have a slide deck.
Yeah, that way they can see. Yeah, thank you.
So we are here to introduce Albion Malibu Brewing Company. We are asking tonight for a vote on a resolution to grant permission for a microbrewery license in downtown Albion. There will be some follow-up work to get this done with the state liquor licensing as well as federal permits to run as a production microbrewery in Albion. But we wanted to kind of tee this up prior to the vote on a resolution, kind of tell you what the business was about, who we are, and give you a little picture of what we hope to do in downtown Albion. Albion Malibu Brewing Company will be a production microbrewery and taproom located at 420 South Superior, most recently the General Hardware Store all the way at the south end of town. The three of us, myself, I'm Ben Wade, I'm an Albion native, was born at Albion Hospital, delivered by Dr. Cram, like half of the town, and my partner, Dr. Charles Moreau, and John Rogers are here with me as well. We are proposing to open a production microbrewery with a taproom that will serve the community of Albion and the surrounding areas in the downtown space. We are hoping to have this project completed to be able to open the doors by late Q3 of 2017, early Q4. We're looking at a project that's somewhere in the neighborhood of $750,000 to $1 million of an investment in downtown Albion to get this production facility open. The nature of the business will be producing handmade beers and eventually meads and ciders in Albion. The taproom will also include some food service, so this will be a limited menu to start with with the hopes of some expansion as the business grows to allow for increasing exploration of food options to Albion, to offer some new options to the downtown area. The location at the south end of Superior will make it the first business coming in from the south as people come up to, up M-99, will be the first business on the south end of town that people will see. We're hoping that this business will drive foot traffic between the upcoming hotel that's currently being constructed as well as the Bome Theater in downtown Albion. It's created a kind of a corridor that hopefully that foot traffic will encourage additional businesses to come into downtown Albion. There's a lot of opportunity with us to partner with other businesses in Albion, including the Food Hub that was just mentioned. We've talked to Pat Lopez and the Albion EDC on a couple of occasions about how we can partner with the Food Hub to maybe do some things that a small business like ours might not otherwise be able to do right out of the gate. They have a lot of kitchen options that are going to be beyond the capabilities of our business that will allow us to do some special events or invite guests, chefs, or do things like that to prepare food in the Food Hub and serve downtown. We're also excited about the potential job creation. We estimate that the brewery in the first year will employ somewhere up to about 15 full-time equivalent positions in downtown Albion. And as the brewery grows and we expand into things like distribution, bottling, canning, getting kegs out into other markets, the opportunity for additional employment exists. So what we're asking today is, there's a vote on a resolution, as I was saying, is essentially the permission for a microbrewery in downtown Albion. We're presenting a couple of additional things that we're proposing down the road that we're working closely with both city manager and the planning commission and John Tracy, who I know is here today as well, to figure out the details of some of the zoning, to allow for outdoor seating and for some things that we think will be really exciting for the downtown area to increase some traffic outside and increase visibility of people in an outside area and hopefully continue to grow the downtown business district. There will be some future applications made around that for cafe seating as well as for manufacturer, for distribution of beer downtown. Again, we're working with the planning commission on that and we're currently slated for December 20th, follow-up with them for some special use permits to follow up on that. Some future phasing in addition to the microbrewery will be asking for some support in redesigning some of the area directly around side of the brewery. What we'd like to do, and again, this isn't for the vote today, this is something that we're working with the planning commission that will come back to city council as we need council buy-in and council support for some future design. But the ultimate proposal that we wanted to present you guys with is what the final product would look like if everything lines up between what we're proposing, working with the planning commission, working with the city manager, and working with you guys. Part of that will be, again, cafe seating on Ash Street. So kind of the phase two of this production, what we would be proposing as part of the Superior Street remodel that's going to happen next year is to take the parking lane on Ash Street and actually to push the sidewalk out to that parking lane and to open up the south side of the building for a cafe-style seating. That'd be some outdoor tables, outdoor service within an enclosed area attached to the building on the south side of the building. Again, increases visibility as the traffic's coming in from the south, you see people outside in Albion, you increase foot traffic, you drive kind of a new type of impression to Albion than what we've had before. We're also going to be asking for, as part of that redesign of the actual curb in the street front, again, because we'd be taking out that parking lane. The other thing that we're looking at that's a lot different than what we've had downtown Albion so far is that our design proposal includes roll-up doors for the front of the building. So we would have a single pedestrian entrance, but the entire Superior Street front cafe of the building would be roll-up doors that would open up to give you a sense of cafe-style seating on Superior Street without being out on the sidewalk or out in the pedestrian areas in downtown Superior. Something that's becoming increasingly popular in places, you go to Grand Rapids, you go to Detroit, you go to a lot of larger cities, that style of these type of buildings is becoming increasingly popular. So it would be bringing, bringing something very different to Albion, but it would be something that would give you a lot more of kind of a big city feel to the Food Hub. Beyond that, I think what we have shown out here and what you guys have in your packets are several initial elevations and perspective drawings, designs of what the space may look like. These are all still kind of in draft phase. We're working with an architect firm out of Chicago called Philoralsma Telzma. Chris Telzma is actually an Albion college alum. We got in touch with him through a mutual friend that pointed us to him. He's been very excited to work on the project and we are kind of to the point now that we're working with a couple of contractors to start to get bids and look at the scope of work that would be required to convert this aging building into something that's both preserves the historic architecture and gives us something that's a lot more modern and kept up than what the current facilities are doing.
Okay.
Are there questions?
Any questions?
Anything I can answer for you guys?
All right. Thank you, Ben. Our third presentation is from Rosalyn Jones concerning the comprehensive plan update.
Thank you. It's a privilege to present to you tonight. Basically, this is a preview of what will be unveiled next week at the public hearing on November 28th. When the comprehensive plan was first drafted, the priorities were not, the goals and objectives were not prioritized. So I want to walk through the document that's been updated. They have now been prioritized with economic development being the top priority. When the draft document was first written, the EDC was in a leadership transition and we've had the privilege of having the opportunity to begin working with the new EDC director. And so this section on economic development is now much stronger. I'd like to point out that under goal number one, which is economic development, one objective has been added, and that is just simply to encourage the redevelopment of brownfield sites. In the comprehensive plan, we have a number of redevelopment sites that are identified, so obviously we want to encourage the reuse and redevelopment of those sites as possible. Under goal number two, when we did both the community input survey this summer and we did the town hall meetings, not surprisingly, one of the things that citizens wanted most was improvement of the streets and roads. And so after receiving that input, we had internal discussions with city staff in terms of the implications of making those improvements. And so when you look at improving the visible infrastructure of the streets and roads, we also have to take into consideration upgrading the sewer and water mains as well. So by March, we'll be pointing back to the community in terms of the responsive to the demand for improving the streets, but also sharing the fiscal responsibilities and limitations and just education of the plan that we're planning to execute as we move forward. Under goal number four, which is beautifying Albion's neighborhoods, again, we want to encourage as much as possible infill development. Up until now, the city has enjoyed a very productive relationship with the Calhoun County Land Bank. There has been a change in leadership at the county treasurer level. We're hoping to continue that productive relationship, which will, you know, help us to encourage that type of infill development that we're seeking. Meanwhile, in terms of looking at new areas of significant development, the southeast quadrant, am I pointing in the right direction, is an area where, again, in consultation with city staff, the infrastructure is there to accommodate future housing development as well. So we're encouraging both infill development, infill redevelopment, as well as being able to accommodate new developments like Mason bungalow, excuse me, bungalow-style housing where if this was the housing, in the middle there's a court, so we're talking about a larger land mass, but the point is encouraging different types of housing stock that's available currently in Albion. Under goal number five, the actual goal has been amended. Originally, it was to stabilize the downtown, enhance its historic character, but there was a request to expand and broaden it, and so you'll see that it reads now, stabilize the downtown, enhance its historic character, and support its economic growth. And under that goal, the first objective was strengthen the DDA. There were questions about, well, what does that mean? And so one of the realities of the DDA is that there are budgetary and financial constraints, so the new language reads, "Find creative ways to increase the number of DDA initiatives," which means basically being aggressive and finding the financial resources to support the types of things that we need to accomplish like perhaps a downtown parking analysis. I think that's that there on that. Under goal number nine, focus planning and resources to support, focus planning and resources to enhance and transform the city's major quarters. We're very pleased that in initial conversations with the EDC, the improvement of the quarters may be a priority to the EDC, so perhaps there is an opportunity for synergy and collaboration and working with the EDC on that objective. Looking at Eaton Street, for example, there are inconsistencies between the current zoning and the current land use. And looking at the Chemical Bank property, for example, part of that property is zone residential, part of it is zone business, and so there's a lot of cleanup that we need to do in terms of zoning. In addition, one of the challenges on Eaton Street in particular is some of the properties are privately owned, but the point is that looking at what can we do in terms of improving that quarter. In terms of Austin Street, we're beginning to have conversations about what is the vision for that quarter before we jump in and start making, and first of all, there are, in terms of existing zoning, some negative implications in terms of Austin Street. But before we jump in and start making changes to zoning ordinances, what is the vision? So that conversation is just beginning and obviously we'll back to council for consultation in terms of what the proposed vision will be for the Austin quarter. Under goal number 10, and this is a very aggressive, but we believe realistic comprehensive plan, one of the things that I often say is that the hardest, I've spent 30 years in economic development, one of the hardest things to gain in economic development is momentum. And there's tremendous, as you know and as you see, the art program, the... And there's tremendous, as you know and as you see, the art program, the brewery program, there's tremendous synergy happening in this community. So we want to maintain that momentum. We cannot afford to lose it. But one of the things that's going to be key to fulfilling this plan are the numerous partnerships that have been cultivated, as well as some that may need to be cultivated. So with that said, I'm going to point out that under bullet number one, where it talks about develop a local food culture through increased access to healthy food and nutrition education that utilizes community resources, including businesses, farms, community gardeners, markets, farmer's market, food hub, a lot of that is in terms of that external network that we need to develop. Under number 11, which is a new goal, which addresses healthy living, there is a, there's a food hub objective there, but it's focusing in terms of, more internally in terms of community. I mean, there's an external outreach that we need to do in terms of the network, but also an internal work that we need to do in terms of the community of marketing, basically. Marketing the availability, marketing the food hub as a resource internally. So that goal has been added, and obviously, it talks about the food hub, partnerships with the food hub, partnerships with various healthcare providers, patient advocacy groups and transportation services, and the VISTAS to support healthcare access and wellness program in Albion. And again, one of the objectives is to ensure, especially as it relates to our students who do walk or bike to school in the community, making sure that they're safe paths. I think it's MDOT that has a program, Safe Routes to School. So in terms of next steps, we're going to continue discussions about future land use. We're digging into the technical aspects and details of zoning, and also their, the comprehensive master plan update process requires outreach to, I think the legislation says, adjacent or contiguous communities, but making sure basically that we engage our neighbors. So that's it. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Rosalyn.
You're very welcome.
Citizens.
Mayor and Council, I just want to mention that the next steps in regards to this process and the adoption of the vision and goals for the comprehensive plan is on the 28th at 7:00 PM. The Planning Commission will have a public hearing, and then they will be voting on their recommendation to council. You're having your special meeting on the 30th, which is a Wednesday, at 6:30 to consider their recommendation.
Thank you, Cheryl. Citizens' comments. Persons addressing the City Council shall limit their comments to agenda items only and to no more than five minutes. Proper decorum is required. Are there citizens' comments on the agenda this evening?
Marcola Lawler, 918 North Berrien Street, Albion, Michigan. In regards to the Albion Malibu Brewery, when they make the seating area, how does that affect the two-way traffic? And do we have to get permission from MDOT to do that little space right there?
If you want me to respond. The MDOT permission is not required for the Ash Street because that is not an MDOT thoroughfare. We will be working with them with the reconstruction because that corner is considered a bump-out area. It will be one of the curbs that'll have the bump-out. So their proposal is to utilize that bump-out space instead of having parking there to actually have the outdoor seating and the sidewalk. So it will require going through our regular process in terms of the Planning Commission, possibly zoning, and the council for approval.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Bill Dobbins, 5901 East Michigan Avenue, Palmer Township. I would strongly suggest, or strongly support, the Albion Malibu Brewery. I've had the opportunity to work at times with these three individuals, and I can't tell you how impressed I am with the work and the thought that they've put into this business. I think we all, as we think about downtown development, hear lots of good ideas, but it takes an awful lot of work to turn an idea into a business. And these guys have spent a tremendous amount of their time, effort, money to work on something they have a tremendous passion about and can be a tremendous asset for this community. It ties together, as they mentioned, with the hotel. It ties together with the Bome. It ties together with other visions that are going on in this community. I can't thank them enough for stepping up and playing an active role in this, and I would strongly encourage the council to support their efforts 100%. Thank you.
Thank you. Other citizens' comments? Okay. Oh, sorry. Thank you.
So this is Jim Stewart. I'm at 214 West Oak Street in Albion, and I want to build on what Bill Dobbins said. I also want to support the Albion Malibu, and moving forward with that, to Stacy and I, one of the things that we look for when we go out or when we're going to another city is we look for things that are excellent, things that are good, not just good, but things that are excellent. And we know Ben a little bit, and we just started to get to know the other two gentlemen, and listened to what they have going on. And in our opinion, this is going to be an excellent thing. It's not just a good thing. It's not just something filling a building. This is something that is, really brings excellence to Albion. And that is something that we crave, and we also see that Albion Malibu Brewery then will bring in people from outside of Albion, making Albion a destination, which I think is very important to get foot traffic and traffic through Albion. So Stacy and Jim Stewart support the Albion Malibu.
Thank you. Okay. Hearing none. Consent calendar. Item A, approve regular session minutes from November 7th, 2016's council meeting.
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion and a support. Any corrections? Voice vote then. All in favor of approving the regular session minutes of November 7th, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Items for individual discussion. Request approval, resolution 2016-66, a resolution approving on-premises liquor license application for Albion Malibu Brewing Company today.
Support.
Any discussion or questions?
If I might, Mayor and Council, what you have before you is the application for, they're seeking support from the city relative to their application to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission for their microbrewery license, a brewer, but microbrewer license and the small wine maker license. And that's what you have before you for consideration.
Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed, Brown.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
And Mayor Protam French.
Yes. Thank you very much. Best of luck, gentlemen.
And I just want to reiterate that at the December 20th meeting, they will be before the Planning Commission in regards to their special use permit.
Thank you. Item B, discussion regarding the hateful vandalism that took place in Albion.
Well, Mayor and Council, in case you didn't hear, we had some unauthorized graffiti artists last week who unfortunately were placing swastikas and other hate-filled expressions on buildings and other pieces of private property. So I am pleased to report that they have been placed under arrest, and so now we need to let the legal system move forward. But for any business owner who has incurred expenses relative to the removal of the paint, if they would please contact either myself or Chief Scott Kip with the invoices for those costs so that we can place those with the prosecutor as we try to seek restitution as part of their remediation for this.
Any other comments from the council? I would add that, only that the event that happened in front of the Albion Malibu Brewing Company where, near the location of where graffiti was found, I thought was a very positive meeting. It brought our community together in ways that we have not been together in the past. And I would hope that this could serve as an opportunity, even though we were in protest, I think the idea of bringing the community together for conversation, dialogue, prayer, is only good. And so that if such a thing were ever to happen again, I think our community would stand united in opposition. And so I think that sends a very powerful message to the larger world. So thank you very much for everybody who helped organize that, who attended that event, who thought about what was going on, and were supporting our citizens during that difficult time. Thank you.
If I could have a point of personal privilege on that as well.
Sure.
I want to extend an appreciation, especially to our public safety officers who were very prompt in responding to this effectively, as well as our crews from Public Works, who we had to take off of the leaf collection, I'm sorry. But to help get, because we did not want to have these displays in our community, so they were reassigned to work on getting these just taken down immediately. And I want to thank them for their work. But also, I want to acknowledge not only everyone in the community who came together, but our principals from the Albion Malibu, who took it upon themselves to help one of the churches who had been defaced, and they did it themselves, and they stood up. So they're a part of our community. Everyone came together, and we are very proud of what Albion truly does represent. Thank you all for your participation.
Thank you, Cheryl. Cheryl?
I just had one more comment. I've had a lot of people reach out to me from out of the area, and their comment has been consistently the same. Many areas have stood back and let some of this play out. Albion took the bull by the horns, and that night had, not only had cleaned up the mess, but also had the organized event. And it was just, I want to thank everybody involved because I can't tell you how many people have called me or written or sent me emails about what a great job everybody did and what a great community this is. So thank you all, any part you played.
Yeah. All right. Any other comments? Thank you. Item C, discuss approved sale of city-owned vacant lots.
Okay. Mayor and Council, if you recall, at the November 8th election, we had two charter amendments on the ballot, one of which addressed the opportunity for the city to sell city-owned property at a rate other than what is the assessed value as established by our assessor. So as an example, the average small lot would probably be between $2,000 and $4,000. And that seemed a bit excessive for an essentially unusable piece of property. So what the charter amendment allows us to do is to set an alternative rate for these pieces of property, and we're hoping that the adjacent property owners in particular will combine them with their existing property and put them back into good usable use. So what you also have distributed today is an initial list of 11 properties. And on the handout that I gave to you at your desk is our proposal relative to what the selling price, the minimum selling price for those lots would be, and that would include the cost of combining them with the existing lot, if they're an adjacent lot, which is normally a $25 fee, so that we can get these back on the tax rolls as well as back into good use, and then the city is no longer required to maintain those lots.
Any questions or comments? I have a question. I vaguely remember, maybe it was in a conversation we had at one point, that we were going to set the minimum at 300 or maximum, and so a lot of these are a whole lot less. I'm okay with it. I just was wondering what the rest...
Well, the thinking was that we would mirror the county's side lot program, which is 300, and many of those aren't sold.
Right.
And if our intention is to get them off of the city's, I don't know.
Responsibility?
Asset map. Then it needs to be more reasonable.
Okay.
So we want to cover at least our costs relative to the administration of making these happen.
Okay.
There's a $25 fee for the, for actually combining that, we're including that. So when the people come in, assuming we accept their offer, then it's already been in the process for being combined into a single lot. And the advantage of that is then you won't have the additional $50 sidewalk fee for the separate parcels. So that was the thinking behind it. One of them does not, which is number seven on Edwards Street, that one does not include the combination because it's actually three lots within that larger parcel.
Okay.
And two of them, which are a little bit higher, they actually butt some water, but we're hoping that the adjacent property owners will take those.
And just a procedural question, if I may. If you've got two owners and they should both want the lot, what's the procedure for handling that?
We'll have a procedure set up so if they want to divide it between, they can split.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Yeah. Councilman Kraus.
I'm looking at these, and I see that they're, like, the one that's three lots together. Are any of these buildable size?
I would have to ask. John Tracy, who I don't see, most of them are not, probably the vast majority are a sliver. There might be a couple that in theory could build something, but John, I'll ask John to find.
John Tracy, Director of Planning, Building, and Code. The majority of these lots are not buildable. There are a few of them that could be buildable, but we have lots that have been sitting out there that have been buildable since '91, some later than that, and then some more recent, so.
Okay.
But these lots have been sitting out there for a long time.
And there's just the one that is not a residential lot? There's just the one that's light industrial?
There's, excuse me, there's one that's light industrial. Actually, why that was ever designated as light industrial is besides me because of its location. It's across the street from an area that was AM1 and still partially is, but we need to address that through the zoning and get the zoning changed on it, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
No. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I have a quick question.
Please.
Jeanette Spicer, 1303 East Michigan. I just have a quick question for Cheryl, I guess. How will the notification process work for notifying persons of the availability of these properties? Will it be similar to what the county does, newspaper, or?
We, assuming that council approves this action today, we will be issuing a public notice in the paper, but because we know that these properties impact adjacent property owners, we will make a specific outreach to those adjacent property owners as well as make certain they're aware.
Separate and apart from the notifications to?
Yes.
The entire community?
Yes.
Thank you.
And for those of you who are wondering, Jeanette is one of our newly elected City Council people, so, and Marcola.
Sonia.
And Sonia are also in attendance, so thank you. Sorry, Marcola, I didn't expect to see you in the front row. So welcome. So if there are no other comments or questions, can I have a roll call vote, please?
What was your support? A motion?
I thought we had a motion. No? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Now, roll call vote.
Just for clarification, you're approving publicizing the sale of these properties at the recommended prices?
Councilmember Decker.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
And Mayor Protam French.
Yes. Thank you. G, which, interesting, it went from C to G, but that's okay. City managers' report.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
All right. While I get to my report. The most important part, lost and found. Someone left a baby shoe here, and it's a really cute shoe, so if you know who the shoe belongs to, you may want to claim it. If not, it's my paperweight.
Where was it found?
It was found here, in the council chambers at a recent meeting, so.
Oh.
Is it your baby's? I'm sorry. I knew they brought it here.
Appreciate it.
All right.
That's funny.
Okay.
That's great.
All right. Okay, I just want to restate that in regards to the comprehensive plan, we're really excited to be moving this along. And I can't thank enough the work of Rosalyn Jones in regards to the support she's provided to the city and the EDC with her expertise. Thank you again, Rosalyn. We could not have gotten this far this fast without you. So the, again, the public hearing and the recommendation by the planning commission will be at the Monday, November 28th meeting at 7:00 PM here in council chambers, and then council will take that up, and that's the phase one of the comprehensive plan on November 30th at 6:30 PM also here. I also want to remind you of the 2017 upcoming budget sessions. There is the one this evening following this meeting, as well as Wednesday, the 30th at 7:00 PM. Then on December 5th is the public hearing for the 2017 budget. And December 19th at 7:00 PM is the actual adoption of the 2017 budget and the amendments to the 2016 budget. If you were here last week, you, you were able to participate in the art exhibit. Albiens All About Art this month. So we had this student from the college and her professor, Michael Dixon, and her exhibit, so she was, she was so, she was actually skipping down the hall, yeah, I'm telling on her. But we were, we're so thrilled to have local artists beautifying our walls and our space here, and to celebrate the talent we have in Albion. So we're looking forward to having a rotation of various artists through the college. And employee of the month this month was Jim Linderson, the Director of Public Services. He always goes above and beyond, and we're really thrilled to have had him recommended and recognized this month as our employee of the month. And I want to remind everyone that the holidays are here, and on Thursday and Friday, November 24th and 25th of this month, City Hall will be closed in celebration of Thanksgiving. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for our city manager? Hearing none. Future agenda items, aside from those mentioned previously. Okay, maybe it'll be a light meeting. Do we have a motion to excuse our absent council members?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, we heard from both Maurice and Joe?
Yes.
Great. Can I have a voice vote? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much. Citizens' comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than five minutes. Proper decorum is required. Are there citizens' comments today? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Wayne Arnold, 906 Hall Street. First of all, I'd like to congratulate our new city council. Good job, guys. Good job. I, I'm just excited about all this new information, all this art. I'm, I'm excited about all the plans. And you know, I'm almost embarrassed to bring up this with everything going so positive. I really hate bringing it up, but we have to address this. I had an incident on April 3rd. I was going to the store, my, I had my campaign sign, it fell. I went and replaced my campaign sign. A guy came behind me, he was a Trump supporter. We had some dialogue, you know. I told him I didn't want to talk to him, I didn't want to discuss nothing he was talking about, and in return, he said, "F you, nigger," and death to you and the rest of you niggers. Now, that's far beyond the swastika, you know. This happened April, this happened April 3rd, and as of April, as of today, I had no feedback, I have no information. I even gave the police a lead, so they didn't follow up on it. So I followed up, I gave him the guy's name, I would manage to give him the, I found out what his name was, he do live in Albion. So you know, I would just, you know, with everything being said, I go along with it. But I would like the police to address this, you know, real promptly, because you know, a swastika is one thing, but threatening the lives of somebody in a whole, in a whole race, that's something entirely different. And we need to address this right away before, before that get out of hand, especially. So thank you for your consideration, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Last one.
Mike Bearman, 1101629 Mile Road. This is, this is my last board meeting that I will be addressing you guys at, as the county commissioner. The new county commissioner will take over the first of the year, but with the way the schedule looks for next month, it's going to be very, very difficult for me to make it. I've had a pleasure of serving you guys in the east side of the county for the last two years. And for me, it's been a 40-hour-a-week job, being county commissioner, because I tried to be on as many boards as I could be on, because that's how we get things to the east side of the county. That's not done in the boardroom like you guys are at. We have those too, but that's generally just budget and things of that nature. The actual work goes on in the different committees, and that's how we get things to the east side of the county. And I've been proud to be able to bring to you a lot of the things that have gone on. But I've also been proud of the Cheryl and a few of the other ones that have been coming out to the township meetings, because in the years past, that has never happened. And we have to collaborate with all of the communities around us in order to be able to get things happening that we need to happen. One thing that went on at Albion Township last week was Albion Township approved an expansion of Woolworth. Woolworth is part of the Brembo complex, and it's their heat treat. They're almost going to double the size of their heat treat, and they're going to be putting on between 25 to 30 new employees out there by doing that. So these are some great things that are coming to our area that we still need to be informed of and be on top of at all times, because that's the way we get things done. The strategic planning, I can't say enough good things about what you guys are doing with that. You have to be able to put together a tremendous plan of where you want to go and how you want to proceed. And don't forget the communities around you, because they need to be putting a lot of the stuff in their strategic plan to help you guys out also. You aren't going to do it by yourself, and they're not going to do it by themselves either. It's got to be something that we all work together on everything. And collaboration, 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 we have to work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Sonia Brown, 713 Orchard Drive. I wasn't going to speak, but Mr. Arnold's comments kind of opened old wounds for me. So many of you know, I was on the school board prior to being elected to city council, and between April and May, my house was targeted twice. One with eggs and one with bullets. So I don't want to dwell on the past, I don't want to dwell on the negative. What I want to do is encourage Albion to take the incident and the energy that I witnessed and participated in at the vigil. And let's move forward, and let's heal as a city. I think we have a lot of work to do. I think a lot of the things that are happening right now are opportunities for us to grow together and strengthen our city. So let's, let's keep dialogue open, and let, let's do some planning, let's do some things. And I'm, I'm really excited to serve Albion, so, yeah, I don't know what the point of that was, but you moved me to get up and speak, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sonia.
Can I pass something out?
Sure.
Is that possible?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
There's some copies, if anybody could. Just talking points, so I don't forget what to talk about. Bill Dobbins, 15901 East Michigan Avenue, Albion, Michigan. I, I'm here as a commitment to, to really two individuals. Number one is Mayor Joe Domingo, who in discussions pointed out to me how important it is when doing things in Albion to be open and transparent about what's going on. And so even though Joe isn't here, this is a commitment to him, and, and also to Garrett. In one of the town meetings that he put on, he spoke specifically about transparency of projects that are going on and how they impact the city and the city council. And so I'm here to speak about 400 South Superior, which is the Peabody Building. And I've shared with you just some talking points that may make sense and may not. But I have been, I've been privileged to be part of what's going on in downtown Albion over the past four years in conjunction with a group of significant investors that four years ago talked about, crazy as it sounded then, building a, a hotel in downtown Albion. In the last month, we've experienced what has happened, and, and what a great role of leadership the mayor and the city council have played in making this happen, city manager, everybody. So it's exciting to be here four years later and see things that have really happened. And so my wife and I, we own real estate in this town, and under the name of Ace Investment Properties. And so as we've reflected on, on what's going on in the community and certain about where we are in our life, it, it is, we think, our responsibility to take a, take a more active role in, in what we're doing. And so we've, we've adopted with, with loving embrace, the Peabody Building. So the Peabody Building is the, the old Lawton Slager Lipsy Building on the corner, across from Parks, kitty corner from the old Sanders Building. And that building is, is, I think, constructed somewhere around 1852. It is one of the, the pillars of, of the historical landmark district, so it was a cited building in the document when the, when the, when that, when the downtown was granted that historical territory. And so it is a significant building in the history of Albion. So that brings us to where we are today, and, and again, our effort to make sure the city council knows exactly what we're doing. First of all, congratulations to the city for having the foresight to, to develop the comprehensive plan and the work that's been done and been cited tonight, and the active effort that is being done is, is being put into the redevelopment-ready plan, which would be awesome for the city and for the, the momentum that, that we're experiencing and to continue this to, into the future. We have, Karen and I have brought together a team, because frankly, we're not developers. We're just very interested and concerned citizens. And so you will be meeting, or have met, Bruce Johnson from Revitalize, Randy Case, who is our architect for the building, and Jessica Flores, who's our historical consultant for the building. Them with my key, my leader, Karen, are going to be making this project happen, is, is, is what we hope. I want to share with you briefly the timeline, because it is a tight timeline, and certainly it involves the city. Our plan is to develop a mixed-use building, two residential units on the second floor, two residential units on the third floor that would be rented at market rates. On the first floor would be a commercial space, most likely split up into about 1,500 square foot commercial spaces. Our goal is to have the drawings complete from Randy by Thanksgiving, which obviously is very close. That allows us to have contractor meetings for costing information completed by December 15th. Bruce Johnson is planning on being on the agenda for both your December 5th and December 19th meeting, to bring you up to date on that. And we, our, our goal is to have our application submitted to the MEDC prior to December 31st, And I want to share with you what role the city will play in this, because number one, I'm totally new at this, and, and while city council has had some experience, this will be the first sort of mixed-use MEDC from a private investor. And so grant requests must come from the city. This is not a request that, that I make, or Ace Investment makes, or Albion College makes, or anybody. This is a, a request that comes from the city. The purpose of the, the grant is that this project, if you look at cash flowing it, is about a $600,000 to $700,000 valued project. And I, and, and when, when you do a full rehabilitation of a building, though, the cost of this building is probably going to be about 1.2 million to totally do this project. So the, the challenge is, how do you get from $700,000 to 1.2 million? And again, I'm just using general numbers. And that's where the MEDC comes in. And if they don't come to the table, then obviously there, there isn't viable projects to rehabilitate, completely rehabilitate these, these types of buildings. And so the city plays a very critical role in, in, in these types of projects becoming successful hundred-year pillars of, of the new Albion. And so the, the city must be an active participant in the process. And, and the city, and again, this isn't Bill Dobbins' idea, this is the way the set, that's set up with the state, is that there, there, the city must have some investment in the project. Now, nobody likes to hear tax abatements, because they think somebody's getting off with something. And many times, that is the investment that the, the community puts into these types of projects. It isn't that the, the community loses money, what it does is lock it in at, at a existing tax base and defers the, the taxes over a period of time to support the project. And, and so certainly in the next two city council meetings, more will be mentioned on that. But this is, this is really critical that we understand that, that this is really a three-legged stool to success, and that's, number one, is it private investment, and that's the role that Ace Investment Properties will play. Number two is, is commercial funding, which would be funding from a local bank that is supported by the pro forma of the project. And, and then number three is the MEDC support, which only happens with the full support of the city of Albion and, and obviously, city council. So I thank you for listening to us tonight, you'll hear more about it. We are totally committed to, to Joe and Garrett's request for full transparency on what we're doing, and we will continue to give you probably more information than you want. So thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Other citizens' comments? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we are adjourned. Council?